All right, it's six o'clock. We're gonna call the Planning Commission, monitor town chief, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Planning Commission order to work. Well, let's stand for the pledge.
[inaudible]
All right, Connie is excused today, so we have a new secretary over here. Wanna get going, Bill?
Good.
Yes, he's got-
Gonna call the roll?
He stepped up.
Shablock?
Here.
Walsh?
Yeah.
Schweitzer?
Excused.
Reeder's here. Ballor, there. Rosenbrot excused. Peckham excused.
And Peckham excused, yep. All right, we had a chance to look at the agenda.
But they called was excused also.
That's what he said, Peckham, yep. You got it right?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We've got a motion, we've got support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion and support for the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, now is when we open up for public input. I see a few faces here. If anybody wants to step up to the mic, let us know what you've got to say. Be happy to hear from you.
Didn't recognize you, Walker.
I don't see the real estate agents here. They contacted me about the special use permit for the antique place down the street. And I guess the special use permit runs out after a year, and it's run out, and somebody wants to buy it, but he doesn't wanna make it a residential place, wants to use it for special use. So, I'm speaking in favor of changing the special use permit one-year clause, I guess it would be, so.
Actually, Vaughn, that's a combination of non-conforming use, which if you don't use it for a year, you lose it. And a special use permit can run with your name. So, that's kinda what we're gonna talk about tonight, is whether you want to put in, we had that one in Collin, the old stacker bolt works that just not really used visibly, but they said it was good.
There's a couple other places, the old store down the street here, and then the, I think it's the old vet clinic out there, are sort of in that category.
Some might violate any.
Yeah. So, they're buildings that probably will never be residential, but nobody can buy them if-
And they won't be sold and torn down, and rehabbed anymore.
Yeah. Okay, whatever. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Turn your mic on. You gotta say everything you guys do again.
This is a probably a good time to say, I am that person that's looking to buy that building.
Oh.
So, no, just my concerns, you know, to what everybody's talking about. I've had some good conversations with people like Rich and David, is the current ordinance is extremely restrictive. It puts buildings back into like a corner where nobody's gonna do anything, they're just gonna turn into nothing. And when somebody's looking to buy a building, make that kind of investment, they wanna know that there's gonna be some flexibility. My second concern is just the lack of, I guess, communication I've received. It seems like a lot of terms of the township is working against me versus for me, which has been frustrating, partly because of the ordinance, I think that is. But just communication, like anything in life is the key to a good relationship, and communication's been very tough with zoning. So, I know that's on the agenda, I know that's a concern that's being addressed, but, you know, I'm here to give my input along those lines, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, anybody else here wanna speak? Anybody else wanna speak during public input? Anybody else? All right, public input closed. Items for consideration. First item on our agenda is zero-nine dash one hundred dash zero-two-one dash one hundred dash two-six-zero dash oh-two, Joseph Guzzella, twelve-eighty East North Union Road, special Rich, you wanna start off with that, or do you wanna start off? Whoever wants to come up first?
Well, I can start off with the little bit of the background. And Mr. Guzzella wanted to sell off the home, and one of the garages or accessory buildings from the farm property. There's gonna be a different farmer farming the field than we have under chapter or section three point four seven, special use permit that can allow that to happen, and not have to lose the value of those former agricultural barns or accessory buildings if they're worthy of keeping. What the applicant has indicated is, there was a time crunch on their purchase agreement, so he needs to get approval, and then he was gonna take them down anyway, because right now they're too close to the property line. It's supposed to be the height of the building, close ten feet away. And because he's still gonna own under single ownership all of the property until the sale goes through, that would not necessarily be a hardship that he couldn't correct. But if you grant, you should probably just grant it on the condition that within a year he completes the demolition, and the purchaser completes the demolition of all nine compliant buildings. You can still have a residential accessory building for the house, and you can still have a barn for the farm field, but the barn has to be fifty feet off the property line in the section three-twenty-seven, as we've dealt with numerous times, is what you have for your residential buildings and stuff like that. So, now it's up to them, and Spicer's done the evaluation, reviewed everything, and ready to go.
Yes, you should have a copy of our review. I'm Don Scherzer. We provided a planning review for the site. And you can go through the history, but I think Rich gave a good overview of the history of the property. If you go to the last page, our recommendation is to approve the request for special use permit waiver with the following conditions: that, as Rich said, demolish the shed, outbuilding the tool shed following the division of the land and the sale of the property, combine parcel two from the site survey with that a parcel one hundred dash oh-twenty-one dash two hundred dash twenty dash oh-oh, following the sale of the land to ensure that the ordinance requirements are met, and then execute a recordable document with the register of deed notifying any subsequent purchaser of this parcel of property, all the terms and conditions of the special use permit. That's our recommendation.
So, once the buildings are demolished, then it's up to code, right?
Correct.
The property.
Okay.
So, you don't need to record anything until they either don't get torn down, at which point we have an enforcement issue, or they do get torn down, they won't be recorded. So, that's the only caveat to that is-
So, along with everything else in our township, whose job is it to make sure that that happens, say?
Trust me, member of the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got news for you.
I'm with Rich, I'm sorry I said that.
It'll be either Dave or the building inspector.
No, not the building inspector. Not his job, read your ordinance.
What?
It's his job.
Okay. Well, I said either or. Well, I was half right.
Now, we corrected all that.
Okay.
Dave asked to give him the demo permit, so he's gotta do what's going to do.
And if special use permit goes through, if I was listening to you carefully, you said that's good forever.
Special use permit runs with the land. However, if you put conditions on it that the buildings come down within a year, the need for a special use permit evaporates and goes away.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that. That's why I said that.
Right.
Okay, I will make a motion that we grant the special use-
Gotta open it to public hearing.
I thought we closed it. I got our close at six oh-five.
That was public comment.
Just a public hearing for this.
Just on the Guzzella appeal.
Did you get all those things that the attorney spoke? Did you get them all down there?
Yep. It's right on that machine, right there.
Yeah.
You have any questions? I mean, we're, the building demolition was in the plan all along. We're gonna tear those down. I'm gonna try to get it done within a year. I'll do the, we'll do the best we can. What we wanna do then is, all the lots on there-
Are you the, you're the landowner, right?
I'm one of them.
One of them, okay.
He's the other one.
Okay, okay.
What we wanna do, all the properties there, the lots are one hundred by two hundred. We're gonna make everything one straight line across, you know, two hundred feet deep. That way, the guy that rents the property from us for farming will have, he'll work it under, you have one straight line, won't have to do any zigging or zagging around it. So, that's our ultimate goal. And the purchaser knows that those buildings are, whatever he can come, has to come down. Now, the barn that was there, that went down a couple years ago. There's no longer a barn there.
Don't get credit for predetermination or demolition.
Yeah, he had to, 'cause we had a guy come in and then destroy it, so he had to get a permit from somebody. I hope he did, so.
So, you're gonna be taking the barns down, and not the new owner of the house?
Well, two of the buildings are staying with the farm. That's the ones you're talking about.
Yeah, those are the two we're gonna, that we're gonna take down.
There's an old corn crib on the property we're selling that's close to the line, that's well, it's leaning. That, that'll come down easy.
But that's coming down as well?
Yeah, it's, it's almost down now.
Yeah, I, yeah, I drove by, yeah. So, there's not gonna be any outbuildings that are gonna be on that property?
There might be one, if he can save it. And that, that's the old granary. It's the one next to the one that's leaning over.
And how close is that to the property line?
I have no idea.
Do you know, do you two know about that?
I don't. We unfortunately get the information we're given.
I don't know if he's gonna keep it or not, you know. It depends if he could probably put a roof on it, 'cause it would, the whole roof would have to come off and be rebuilt, and I don't know if he wants to do that, so. But that one could be taken down.
Is that gonna be with the lot that has the house on it?
Yes.
He'd be better off to just move it, tear that down and put up a new pole building.
Within the lot?
The right distance away, yeah.
Okay, we can let him know that.
I know Jim has a tractor too. You can probably take him down. I have a twenty-five-year-old excursion, I can take it down, so.
Once it's down, it's easier to handle.
Yeah. Anyway, that, that's just, we have to make a decision. We have to tell you what to do to be in compliance. And it's probably easier to just say, take them all down within a year. And if the house wants a new pole building, they can come in, they look at the size of the lot, we have a table in here, it can be twelve-foot sidewalls, seventeen-foot peaks, twelve-hundred square foot maybe, or whatever it's, whatever it's entitled to, they can have, and it'll be a lot better than trying to fix a corner curb.
Okay.
Or granary.
And, yeah, we can, we can do that. That shouldn't be a problem.
You're not the one that's gonna own it anyway, so.
I'm not the one that's gonna own it anyway.
Buyer can come up with the money, that's, we can, buyers can always come up with the money.
That, that's up to him, yep.
The conditions, attorneys now, gotta be decided by somebody. Either him or the new owner's gonna have to stipulate. You'll have these down in a year, unless you wanna make an exception to the rule. I recommend you don't do that.
We do have the discretion in the ordinance to alter the setback if it is deemed necessary, like a variance. But we're not the Board of Appeals. As a matter of fact, this section does not let you go to the Board of Appeals, because everything you do is so discretionary here.
So, there you go.
Sorry, you, well, we're still, we're still open to the public. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Anybody else? Did you say everything?
Yep, that's, that's pretty much all I got.
So, we got a vote on it yet, but, that's why, I just wanna close public input if you guys are done speaking.
No, I, I got nothing else.
But you're more than welcome to talk away.
No.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, is there anybody else that wants to come forward and speak? All right, we'll close it up, and-
I'll make a motion to go along with Schweitzer, the planner's recommendation before, about demolition of buildings and combining properties, all of the above that he has listed out here. My concern is the buildings to be down in a year.
I'll support that.
It's a lot of effort, but-
All right, we've got a motion and support.
And if it's in compliance with down in a year, we won't need to record anything at the register of deed.
If it's down within a year, we do not have to.
We don't have to.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion, we've got support. Roll call, vote.
Shablock?
Yes.
Schweitzer, absent. Walsh?
Yes.
Rosenbrot, absent. Reeder is yes. Ballor?
Yes.
Peckham, absent. Got it.
All right, so, motion carried. And, so, do you understand what needs to be done?
So, at this point now, I can tell the buyer, everything's good. We're good to go.
Just make sure to tear your buildings down within a year.
Within a year, yep.
Okay. If you've got any question, get a copy of the minutes.
And then, so then my other question is, who checks on that?
David.
Is it this David?
Back there.
Okay. I'm glad that you're here.
Me too.
All right, then we're all set?
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you. One problem's gone.
All right, next on-
Another one to go now.
Yep, you don't have to stay.
Nope, we're, we're outta here.
Oh, we're very exciting, though. You could stick for the rest.
No, see you tomorrow.
All right, next on our agenda is items to consider here is section six point zero three amendment to permitted uses with special use permit, which is what you two spoke about.
Yeah, this gentleman, Mr. Herblichheimer, has talked to me on several occasions about wanting to repurpose the old Kenny Dairy down the road on Midland. It had been purchased by Rick Schmidt, who was in the antique business. It was an antique retail store. It took some finagling to go back and figure out when it had last been a store, because if you hadn't used that non-conforming use for a twelve-month period, it evaporates, it went away. David did the research and found that between the antique store and the prior use, there had been occasional sales, occasional stuff, so it was allowed to continue with non-conforming use. Mr. Schmidt passed away about two years ago. We originally had some concerns about whether they had lost the non-conformity to the building. The owners of the building, which would be his, I think, wife or widow or family members, came forward with receipts that they would open it up every other month, every third month, and try to sell some of the inventory, so the non-conforming use stayed. The non-conforming use that had been established and retained there was all inside sales. Mr. Herblichheimer is a gentleman farmer. He's got a, some type of financial degree, and he does desk work for a living, but he has pumpkins and things he wants to sell, more or less as a farm market. And so, I talked to Terry about it, and we went through, there was the old garage on Wilder where the young man was selling sheds. There's this one, there's the vet clinic, as Mr. McGee pointed out. There's probably a good half dozen commercial buildings, because we used to not have zoning anywhere, that you would have a gas station out on Seven Mile and New Pickett, Salzburg, or whatever. And so, these buildings continue to exist. If they can't be repurposed, then they go down in value, they get blighted, they start to deteriorate. People buy them and live in them, and they shouldn't be living in them, whatever happens. So, I talked to Terry and suggested that maybe the planning commission could take a look at, and so, you don't think that I came up with this on my own. I used chapter nine, the general business district, nine point zero-three F, which allows by special use permit, the planning commission to authorize any other retail business and service establishment determined to be of the same general character as the above permitted uses. So, that's what I was, now, we have to talk about, this is a residential zone. What do you want, what don't you want? I would say we wanna put some limits on it, not just on a case-by-case basis, but if it's a, next to my house, next to anybody else's house, next to a subdivision, you probably don't want seven-eleven with kids and cars screeching, and like we all used to go to McDonald's and drink cokes and watch the cars drive around. I, Bob remembers that. He's not as old as I am, but he still remembers it. So, anyway, that's what do you want to allow as a special use permit? I think it needs to be kind of like Mr. Shawman and Mr. Fields did, down with the condominiums, where they got those Midland Street lots rezoned as conditional zoning, and they have to be offices, dental buildings, retail sales, but it's limited, closed at nine o'clock, not open all night, not Amazon delivery, not packages coming and going. And so, that's kinda, I think, where we're, we're looking at in any zone, any residential zone, you can rehabilitate one of these buildings, as long as you get your plans submitted to the planning commission, and you get the idea of what you're gonna do, and you get restrictions put in.
So, can we do this in a case-by-case basis?
Pardon me?
Do we do this in a case-by-case basis?
Special, special use permit has to be a case-by-case, but we can put in criteria that says, you know, hours of seven in the morning till nine only, no more than four employees, or, you know, you don't wanna convert it from, and I again use Kenny Dairy, because it's the one that we all know. We drive by a thousand times, coming to and from the meetings. You don't wanna convert it to a machine shop in a residential area. Kenny Dairy also has three bays of storage, four bays of garage behind the Quonset hut, yeah. So, you know, we would say, you can, you can use the Quonset hut for your sales, and you can use one of the bays or two of the bays for your material storage, and you can rent one out as a storage facility. But the questions would have to be, you don't want somebody coming in with a diesel, you got a diesel, don't you? Sorry. You don't want somebody coming in with a loud truck at two in the morning, leaving it idle next door within a hundred feet of the neighbor's bedroom. So, that's, that's where we're kinda, this is just the initial, the guts of it came from what we have in the ordinance, but we just have to decide, where do we wanna expand it, how do we wanna limit it, and what do we want as a special use permit? I asked Don if he's got anything to join to that.
No, other than, you know, we do have a lot of properties, like Kenny Dairy, where you're gonna have to have a special use permit, and it's gonna be case-by-case to redevelop that. Or, as Rich said, they go back and they become dilapidated buildings, because you can't, can't, you would eliminate them, you can't use them for any-
Yeah, nobody wants to live in the city dairy as their house.
Well, if you were in the army and moved over to the Quonset hut, it would be okay, but not so much anymore.
Bill?
What?
Just for a long separate meeting, or?
Yeah. Uh, Bob?
Do you wanna share with us, or just for yourselves?
I just wanted to know if there was someone-
The vet, the vet clinic, yeah. It's, we've had the same problem with the vet clinic. So, I mean, we wouldn't, we didn't-
And, and somebody's moved into the vet clinic without permission.
Well, they supposedly moved into it and used it as a house. And of course, they're probably under the impression, like, why wouldn't we use this as a business? And they don't realize they've gotta come to us, would be my-
I think we've turned it down six times already.
Yes, yes.
Only because that one year had expired.
Yes.
They're using it as a single-family dwelling now.
Well, while this gentleman is here, why don't we just stick right to how we're gonna address this situation?
So, you wanna what, table this?
Well, it sounds like his situation is gonna lead into all the other situations, which I do think, I think we have to do something.
Well, you're, that's true, but you're gonna have to deal with him on a case-by-case basis. I mean, this gentleman's coming in here and says, I wanna do something. Now, the other ones, until somebody comes to here, say they wanna do something-
Well, Bill, we have to amend the ordinance to make it legal. That's the problem. Because we currently don't have a special use permit in the residential zones to repurpose and rehabilitate prior commercial structures. What, what I read you is in the commercial zone, so we need to put that same language in.
Well, how did Mr. Schmidt operate that thing?
Because the evidence demonstrated that it had never been shut down for more than twelve months. It had always been a non-conforming store, so he just opened the store three-hundred-and-sixty days a year. He went from whatever the, whatever the frequency had been to full-time store. And that's how he, and that's what, if you looked at the vet clinic for twenty years, the vet operated at that clinic, nothing happened. It's when he retired, or she, and they stopped using it as a business, that's when they lost the right to use it as a vet clinic.
Only because they waited over a year, right?
Right. That's what your, your ordinance says. Use it or lose it. If you wait more than a year, you've lost your non-conformity.
Because the whole idea-
Same thing with Danny's Market, right?
The whole idea is that they're supposed to go back to residential.
Danny's surprisingly is owned commercially.
Yeah, but it is.
Yeah. And, and as a matter of fact, we just changed the ordinance, I'm saying, five to eight years ago, to put residential on the second story in commercial. So, Danny's is actually ahead of where the ordinance was, 'cause they had the store, but they had apartments on top and behind. And I think Danny's is, what is it, almost done, all done?
Yeah, they're, they're done.
And so, they can go back to being as commercial, they can go back to being a store. The same thing we did in the commercial zone on Salzburg. We don't want welding shops, gas stations, body shops on the first floor, and four bedroom apartments on the second floor. I mean, we, we have restricted what can go on the first floor. Gas, explosives, that type of stuff. If you're gonna have people upstairs, you have to meet all the fire codes, et cetera. Same thing, and I'm, I'm not telling you where to go. I'm asking you to tell me, where you wanna go with this.
Well, you're telling us right now, we, we ain't gonna do anything until we-
Amend the ordinance.
Amend the ordinance.
And that's what tonight's discussion is. How do you wanna amend the ordinance?
Do you wanna allow?
So, if we amend the ordinance-
Well, the thing with it is, you're gonna have a real tough time amending the ordinance that's gonna fit the vet's place, the place out on, well, wherever, that place exists that are not, they're done, they're just there.
Yeah, I think Kramer's Market in Franklin Street's another one of these, isn't it?
Yeah.
Kramer's closed.
Right.
So-
Actually, right.
Did it?
When there used to be an old dairy store just beyond their sugar factory there.
Oh, the old Engelhard Dairy?
Yep.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, we all recognize that it's better to reuse and repurpose these buildings. I just want to know that I'm going down the right road if Don and I get together between now and December. And, and I asked Jessica, and I hate to keep dumping on Jessica, but she's-
We gave her a raise, she can handle it.
She can handle everything. 'Cause we used to have Taylor keep a list of what we wanted to amend in the ordinance. We need to get that back and try and do one amendment, one public hearing, one typing, one, get it all done. So, if we have four other things, plus the special use permit, it may take four months before we're ready to have a public hearing. So, I, I don't wanna just rush to a bill and miss the mark. But if Don can get ahold of some of the planners at Schweitzer and see if they have anything that they can add for next month, I can, Don and I, we are running across each other all the time. If you authorize it, we can get together with, if Amy wants to be there, if Jim wants to be there, or the two of you wanna be there, we can have a sum committee and try to figure out, how do we write this?
But that, that doesn't address his problem.
It sounds like since two thousand nineteen was when we had real fire. That's why I need to run this.
Pardon me?
Because since two thousand nineteen, the six zero three said you can't reapply unless it's a two season, right?
No, after twelve months, you lose it.
I doubt it.
Under, under the way it's written.
Bring it to the podium.
Do you want to come, come to the podium and talk and to the...
The way, the way I understood it was under, since two thousand nineteen when this ordinance was drawn up, you can't reapply after the twelve months has expired, right?
You cannot, you can't breathe life back into a dead body. Twelve months, your non-conforming use dies.
So the whole point was that it would go back to residential because it's surrounded by residential area so that it would go back to residential. But we can all agree that nobody wants to live in it.
Right, nobody's gonna, yeah.
What we're trying to do is make it so you can revive it into a commercial.
So all you're saying, Bill, is there's gotta be something that allows it to even happen the first place. But then after that, it could be special u- or spe- uh, case by case, correct?
Right.
Okay. But there's nothing that can even allow it to be changed right now.
But we have to write in, we have to write the ordinance so that the reasonably intelligent person can understand what we're asking of it. I mean, I don't want you to buy this property thinking that you have the right to put in a machine shop, a paint shop, a car repair. Cause we're never gonna approve that. If you buy the property for the pumpkin stand, farm market, I told you the farm market is governed by the Department of Ag and if you're a legitimate farmer. And we might allow farm markets on this. Cause it's a very non-invasive type use of the property.
That, that's my other concern is I don't want to be cornered into only one use. I want to know, to your point, that I can come six months or a year or five years from now and say, here's another idea I had, right? Because I'm fairly creative, I'm a hard worker, I can turn a lot of cool things that will serve the community. But to be stuck in just one thing also scares away a buyer.
You, you, that's why we're having the conversation. I'm not trying to do single purpose.
Right, right.
I'm not trying to do no purpose. Because you do no purpose, that's worse than doing everything in the world. But we want to say what you can do and it's this type of thing. Office building, craft shop, pottery, lessons.
Retail bakery, something. But my, my, I mean, my goal is something that serves the community, that is something I am...
Did you say hairdresser?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a waste too.
What were you gonna say, your idea was what?
Something that serves the community. So I understand, you know, a, a, you know, weed store, a strip club, those things are not serving the community really well. But some that serves the community, something that's community based, something that's good retail, there's lots of things that could fall into that.
Like, uh, dry cleaning, pickup and delivery. You don't want to have the chemicals, you don't want to have the, the, uh, cleaning going on. But just for pickup in the satellite office, that'd be fine. Ice cream shop.
Why couldn't you have the chemicals that they are properly stored under the fire pump?
Well, I guess that'd be... You, you can write it in and I'll be happy to...
So...
I'm sitting here thinking about, I don't know how many years back, it was a plumbing and heating store. Then it went to a grocery store.
Oh, that building?
Yep.
Oh, man, that went, for a while, yeah, it was a grocery store there.
Right, and it, it was, an Arab gentleman bought it.
Yeah.
Ran it for a year and a half.
It was third, third base party store, I believe, right, was it, when it was?
Somebody else got in there and did something in it, became an antique store, so it was like...
Well, we, so we have approved, he referred to it earlier. There's the, um, corner right down here across from the, the Willu. We put some conditions on there and we kinda outlined what type of businesses could go in there. So I'm guessing that's probably what we'll do with this. So you would get a list, it wouldn't just be...
That, that's, that's all I'm asking for is give me some, you know, if I'm, and, and the other question I have is then, who can apply for that? Because if that's not something that, you know, can you only apply for that as an owner? If, can you, can, is the owner the only person that can use that? Can you, cause obviously I'd want to rent that out to somebody to use it for that space.
Justin is it?
Correct.
Do you own that building?
No, I do, no, I do not. Right, I'm per screaming on it, but I'm not gonna buy it under these current conditions.
Can I ask you what you want to do with it?
Farm market like, for now, it'd be pumpkins. I'd like to expand that.
A season for pumpkins, what else you gonna want?
Well, he said farm market.
Flowers, Christmas trees, something, if you were to take, in my, in my mind, again, that's why I don't want to be committed to just one thing, but my mind, if you were to take a warm beers and a Freeland, uh, feed and lawn and a, a Baines and, uh, uh, the Old Hammer's Market and, uh, a Big X. And, and you combine all those things, that type of, that, in that, in somewhere in that world. But I mean, I used to have the option is to say, hey, we have friends that are bakers, if they'd like to put some, a bake shop in there, if they like to do, you know, I think of the old, um, Bay City Market, which didn't work out, right? I, I don't know why, I guess it was probably a very expensive build, very expensive rent. But even a mini market, a mini Bay City Market where people could rent spaces and, and do what they want to do in there, that all fall under what's approved, right? So I just want to know that there's gonna be options. I, again, I'm an entrepreneur, I guide ideas and I'm very creative, but I gotta know that there's gonna be someone that's willing to work with me on those ideas. That can come to the, you know, to the township and say, here's what I'd like to do, you know, in five or ten years from now, and not just be stuck with, with something that's only, you know, such a narrow scope, I guess.
So what, what we did down on Two Mile kitty corner from the Willu. Is we did conditional rezoning to commercial. Conditional rezoning basically says, the applicant has to come and ask us for this approval. We cannot tell you what to apply for. You have to come and say yes or no. If you say yes, we, if we approve it, and then you change from the flower shop, bakery shop, to a drill press or whatever. Then your zoning automatically reverts back to residential and you're illegal. Okay?
Right, makes sense.
So what, what we might want to do is ask for Jessica to give to us the rezoning conditions. That were put on the signature dentil that you see the building going up there. It's from the dental office right to the corner, the three houses agreed to be rezoned. And they are at limited purposes. So if, if you go down what are permitted in the general business district, that's what they got to put in that neighborhood area. Obviously, the Willu's the commercial, the, uh, insurance office on the south side of Midland is commercial and Top Gun Liquor's commercial. But they have the right to go commercial. And it's not gonna be a campground. I mean, so I think when we went through it with, uh, those three houses in the vacant lot, we probably got half of what you can do in a commercial.
Well, again, all, all I'm asking is that, that I'd have options in the future, but it sounds like that's the way that it's agreed, it should be written, that somebody can come back in front of the board. And, you know, case by case, said, this is what I'd like to do.
Well, if it's a restaurant, I think that case by case would have to limit and make sure the size, the facility, the parking and all that was up to stuff.
Right.
I think your interest in the old Kenny Dairy that Schmidt had might be a little bit undersized in its parking area. Although you said it goes right to the edge of the park or the property line. So you'd have to draw out the parking lot lines.
Yeah.
Take a look at it.
It sounds like you guys are on the right track, but that's, that's my concern and I'm sure it's a concern for a lot of people looking to buy these properties that are kinda stuck in this position.
If you don't finish and close the sale in three months from now, we're that much closer, you can reoffer.
Do I understand this, that all these things would apply?
No, that's why I wanted to see the ordinance because, uh...
I was just gonna say, why would you want to put a nursing home in there?
We did. We, we don't want an animal hospital.
Right, we don't either.
We don't want to, uh...
Those are the things that cannot be used for, I think, right?
What he's described has pretty much been...
Retail, yeah.
Continuum retail sales.
Right.
Right.
Right, and you could have trade school if you had the parking.
Sure. See, I don't think he's parking exactly.
No, no, it, it's not for you, but if you wanted to do something like a pottery school. Actually, that is now in the zoning statute as a residential use, you have to go into residence, so... Um, sign painting, retail sales, restaurant cafeterias and eating establishments. There are, I'm from Frankenmuth, there's a couple of small ones in Frankenmuth. There's the big chicken places and there, and there's a couple of small ones on Main Street that have like four or five tables.
Okay, where do we go from here?
Well, I think finding what we approved for, uh, Mark Fields and Shawman. And we can use that as a starting point for next month. Do we want to just make them all these things that we approved for Two Mile and Midland? And if you say yes, then we can do the, uh, we get the list from Jessica and try to finish all of the rework on the ordinance. Get the printing done, get the typing done, get it reviewed in January, set it for public hearing in February. And maybe the board will agree with it and they'll adopt it and they'll make the changes.
I have a question, Madam Chair. How long do you have before you buy this building?
Um, it's coming right up. Should, it should have been closed.
You own the building?
I don't own the building, I represent the sellers on the building. The family of the estate of Rich. I'm the...
You, you're the other guy I've talked to...
I am, that's...
Sixteen times this month.
Yep.
And I, I sit in your office.
Do you billing?
I'm billing the township.
Oh, no.
Yeah, why, why do you think my bills are so...
No, I'm not that guy, I'm the other guy, you talked to the other guy.
And I get, I guess you're, I would say we're looking for a motion to table this until, for thirty days.
Well, do we have to table...
Until such time we can get the appropriate information from Jessica on what the Two Mile and Midland Road stipulations were. Go down through the ordinance. Some of the things that he described would fit in there. And give our, give our direction to Rich to amend the ordinance as...
One, one thing that's not in here, that would be totally different, is the farm market.
Because it's under gig.
That could be added.
Right.
A- a- actually, it was a market at one time, cause that guy sold all in pumpkins out there. So what's that? That's a farmer's market.
Well, yeah, and the farm market is now regulated by the Department of Ag, GANs.
So that's his problem, not ours.
Well, no, we just put it in that we can give them a special use permit to operate a farm market. And he has to do it in compliance with Department of Ag.
I would ag- I would agree to that.
Well, if you, you said thirty days.
Well, for our next meeting.
Well, that's about thirty days.
Yeah, Jessica will give you the appropriate...
Yes.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna ask...
We'll have Jessica get you that information on...
Ask Jessica to email all of us.
Two Mile and Midland Road.
Well, I mean, instead of saying thirty days, I want you to table it till the next meeting.
December second?
Dave?
I'll amend the motion to table it till the next meeting.
If you make the list of uses, then would there be a need for a case by case thing now?
Yes.
I'll support your motion.
If you said nursery school or, or day nursery. And you were envisioning five to ten little kids in a building the size of yours. And somebody creates a fifty kid subdivision with fenced in areas and playgrounds outside and everything. You might not want fifty kids there.
So I've had this building up for sale for four hundred and thirty-two days as a commercial improved property. And on, on that, I've had roughly twelve to like fifteen people either make a fertile offer or write an offer on that. In that time, the property has went from two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar offerings to a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of that there. With a lot of people that were coming at it had really good significant banking accounts that had approved that property. Instead of having it go down to where it's at right now with the distress. Because of the family of the estate to not actually maintain this property with these people. They don't live around here if they can't maintain it, they come up, they're trying to get rid of stuff because obviously with an antique store, it's full of stuff. So they constantly sell stuff, they're getting to the end of this. So they're just trying to get there. And my worry is now that this is keep going, cause I've never been able to get straight answer on what can actually go in there, what the special use case permit does allow and does not allow. That we're gonna run out of this program, now the special use permit is gonna default completely and now he's not gonna be able to do anything with this.
Yeah.
I will say, I will say that nobody has ever come to the planning commission meeting to ask those questions right there. So that, this probably all could have been avoided if, when it was, um, listed. And, and if they knew that their special use, um, was running out, they should have come to us at that time instead of waiting the four hundred and some days.
I agree, but we did try to go to somebody. We, I went to David and I went to Rich.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to get into an argument, but this is, this is where you need to come to and I don't think anybody has come to us.
I just, I just don't want to see this go like the wrong way. I don't want to see a, a building that could be used and really fixed up, cause let's be real, nobody's buying it under a law.
And that's what we're saying, we're, we're all aware that we need to do something about that. But our process is going to have to be, that we're gonna have to talk about this next month. It's not something that's gonna get resolved right here and right now and tell you, yes, buy the property. You're gonna be able to do something with it. You know, the wheels of justice move slowly. And unfortunately, we can't do that right here tonight. But we do realize that we have some buildings in the area that are just gonna go, you know, to rot, cause nobody's gonna turn that into a house.
Question to the realtor guy.
Yep.
What, what, what people are approaching you to do what?
I've had somebody do an RC track store with selling RC cars and making them to a track. I've had a thrift shop, a gym, beer gardens, electrician, a couple mechanic shops, storage, um, and then don't say pumping, and that's just new, cause I...
David, i- is this first referred to any of this?
No, I heard, but lot that was commercial stuff and, and it's always been, it's always been retail. And that's all, it would give you a lot of it, it was retail, with no outside sales, cause that's how it's always been.
But there was outside sales.
And there was no special use to it.
The guy sold pumpkins, they had, had lawnmowers out there at one time outside of the building, it was never put away at night, so...
Yeah, but Schmidt didn't do that. So that outside sales evaporated after twelve continuous months and not being used.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, first of, we have a motion on the floor, Jim made a motion to...
So we got a motion to table it?
Nope, not table. Move it to the next month's meeting.
Move it to next month's meeting where we'll talk about this and...
Would you give us a chance to get our list together?
Yep.
Do you want to share your list with me, I don't have any problem with that? I'd like to have your list too, all right? And then we can kinda see where we're gonna go with it.
Yep.
You know, I mean, we know what's been entered the last three or four times, you know, so it's like...
Okay, let's, would you call the roll, please?
I'll call for the question.
Thanks.
All right, so who, who made the motion?
I did, Jim.
Do you want to repeat your motion?
I supported it.
Okay, you've got it all down?
Yep, I got that down.
All right, roll call vote?
Need a roll call or just...
Do we need a roll call vote?
No, shouldn't. All we're doing is saying we're gonna bring this, this is gonna be on next month's agenda.
Yeah, but we're asking Jessica to send us information, it doesn't matter.
All in favor?
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, so it'll be on our agenda for next week or next month, sorry.
At that time, would you be able to vote on the approval of this? Or I guess I don't know personally either.
So I don't know how far along we'll get, that's gonna be up to...
What we will hopefully do is narrow down how we're gonna decide what special uses are allowed on these non-conforming properties. That have lost their non-conforming use.
Does this have to go to the board?
Has to go to the board. So if we get in December, everything agreed to, and then we have to bring back a draft. That will have to be put in the paper and sent to the board and have a public hearing. That would be in the earliest January. The board then has to have two board meetings on it. It could be approved in March, best case scenario. And then it's a thirty day wait period before it becomes effective.
So it should have come to us a lot earlier. Time is of the essence, but I understand that.
I think Justin and I talked about that, that... And the supervisor who happened to walk in while we were having this discussion, agreed, we don't need to have these buildings, just continue to deteriorate and dilapidate. So it's not that we were snowballing, you know, I mean, we just had no way around it. Until you, you had the family come up with these sales that they would occasionally have. So you can use it for inside sales. But anything else is dead in the water until we amend the ordinance. Snow machine.
So the sales act, act, and that building did not count for the use of this special use permit?
David, the, the gentleman next to you is the zoning administrator.
This side, yeah, that side.
He, he looked at those and he said, okay, well, and I think he told Justin, can't sell outside, cause Rick didn't sell outside.
Amy.
But he's, he's had, no twelve month period go by with no sales. So that did count. But that's not what Mr. Hoberheimer wants to use the building for, he wants outside.
At least he had the option.
Yeah.
But I mean, Rick Schmidt did.
That's where we wanna be five, four or five months from now. So, and then we got other things, housekeeping amendments to take a look at, but we'll try not to slow this one down and just do the other stuff.
Yeah, we certainly don't want it to sit there and look like that. Okay, let's move on.
All right, got it?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You wanna stick around for the rest of the dog and pony show?
Want to hear about data centers? It's another enlightening conversation. All right.
Well.
All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Thank you.
As far as data centers go, I think, you know, we could spend two hours talking about them, but we all, none of us really know what we're gonna be talking about.
I did make a motion, we table that till we get it further, further information.
Can we, can?
You know, one thing you can do is, uh, call the MTA and ask them to forward to you any information they have on data centers. If there's any, any going in, in any township that they don't have in Michigan, and if there is, give us a contact person. And, uh, oh, and why, I do have an ordinance here that I wanted to, not ordinance from, it's from Tuscola. This lawyer that was at the meeting, they drew this ordinance up for the, uh, a solar farm.
Oh, for solar farms.
Yeah, but, and it's, I, I'm not interested in bringing a solar farm here, but I thought it's interesting when they get down to the end of all the conditions they put on and how they have to meet all these things and then I'd like Rich and Don to look at those and, and I've got five copies made.
Okay, I wanna go back to the data centers real quick. The reason why this ended up on our agenda was because you.
Would you like me to call now?
Yes, yes, yes. He's been getting some information.
Terry Spencer. Um, yeah, the reason I wasn't expecting any decisions to be made here, but, so probably about, uh, five months ago, um, I was contacted by an individual, um, and he had asked if, uh, he could sit down with me and talk about data centers. I didn't really know much about data centers, so I have learned a little bit about it, not an expert yet, uh, never gonna be an expert. So, um, since then, uh, that same person has struck a lease, uh, with property on Three Mile and Wilder, um, property out by the industrial park. Um, they had an option, I think that time may be getting closer to the end, they did a six month, uh, something with that person who owned the property. So I think, I don't know if that's still an option or not. Uh, but more recently, I was contacted by the Bay Chamber of Conference, Commerce, and they had asked if they could have a meeting about data centers and I says, hey, I can have a meeting with anybody. Um, what I don't want this township to get involved with was similar to what the, uh, issue was with the wind turbines and the, and the solar and all that stuff. I said, the first step, I mean, you can come talk to me, but if you have something that you're proposing, I'd like you to come talk to the planning commission and discuss that with them. Um, my concern, if I'm correct in this, Rich, is we don't have anything in our ordinance that really addresses anything with data centers. So I, I think what we need to do is we probably need to all do a little bit of research, um, we need to look and see what other townships are doing. Um, and we just need to prepare for if these people decide they're gonna show up. I was told originally that there was issues with the water, the electricity. When I had that conversation just recently, uh, they said that that's, they don't think that's an issue anymore. So what that means, I don't know, uh, but, uh, they're looking for places. And I don't know that Monitor Township is necessarily the right place for that, but I do know the government is pushing for them and I do know that it's a fact that in order for us to compete with countries like China, they have to have data centers, they're, they're, they're putting them in. Um, I don't know if that's the right thing for us here, so we need to.
A lot of them are like Amazon warehouse orders, Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Electronically come in and then they ship off the order.
Yeah.
Dude, one thing you have to know is they're a large consumer of water.
Yep.
A large consumer of electricity.
Yeah, yeah.
Large.
And, and what, what Don said before you backed Terry, if it were gonna be in Three Mile and Wilder Road, that'd be the biggest waste of the new solar.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
Or even the industrial.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
You didn't spell data centers out, I think we could use the general special use permit for either I-1 or I-2. Something similar in nature to all of these things.
Yeah.
And, and we can squeeze it in, but I, I agreed, who wants to call MTA?
Yeah. The, the biggest thing that I wanted everyone to take home is, uh, we have to be prepared if they show up. So, um, maybe they don't show up, but if they turn something in next month, uh, it'd be a shame if we sat here and didn't know what we wanna do, so.
Yeah, most of the water use they're talking about is for cooling.
Yep, yep, yep.
And they have some huge facilities.
And they got a huge power source and a huge cooling system.
Yep, yep, so that was all I had.
It came to us about a year and a half ago, it was on our agenda, if you look at those minutes. And, uh, he gave a very brief synopsis, and I mean, brief. You know, which we left here really not knowing what they wanted to do. Then they faded away. You know, it's one of those discussion things, so apparently now it's coming back to us, so.
I feel like it's something that's gonna just keep coming back to us, so we should probably be prepared.
I guess I worry about is if the governor's gonna stick her nose in it, only because they're pushing them all over. You know, she's got her nose in solar panels and windmills and is this gonna be next on her agenda? You know, even though, thank God, her money was taken away, all right, so she's not as loose as she thought she was gonna be.
Yeah.
You know.
And, and in this circumstances, um, I would have a hard time believing that the federal government is gonna pull money away from anybody doing data centers. They, they, they have to have them, they, they need them, you know, in order for us to compete with countries like China, um, we have to have data centers, so.
Do you have anything on that, David?
Again, I'll do a little bit of homework and see what we've done for other communities, but I've heard the same thing that Terry's already said. They consume energy, they consume of, of, of water, hire very few people, and they, they generate a lot of noise. And that noise is generated 24 hours a day, 3 days, 5 days a year, so.
They use up a lot of space for very few jobs.
Yeah, a lot of space for very few jobs.
The people that are using them are Facebook, Google, Amazon, uh, what's that, they want Microsoft.
Yep.
They're all building data centers everywhere.
And along with the data center and the power supply, they are gonna be bringing in battery storage to what end data centers because the power goes down.
Yeah, could be, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, so, so something to think about.
That's why you don't want them on Wilder Road.
Yep, yep.
Yep, all right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so Jim, was that a motion to take the data, info to the data centers for next month?
Everybody start watching YouTube videos on data centers?
We actually can table it until such time the chair is furnished with the appropriate documents of exactly what's gonna go on.
Okay, we have a motion and a support, Madam Chairman?
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Um, so will you two look into those and get back to us with some research?
Yep.
Whatever.
Will do.
Okay.
Before next, before our next meeting, so we'll have something to kinda chew on.
Real quick, I'd just like for everybody to know that as of tonight, um, tractor supply has met all the conditions that were you guys proposed.
Again.
And, uh, we are well set to move forward on their addition.
Oh, perfect.
If we've gone out to Michigan Sugar and repurposed their signs and all that other stuff, come to find out, the road commission approved their signs, state of Michigan said, no. We don't want your signs out there, we have enough signs. So apparently the state of Michigan tells us what we can do signage wise. So their Jake Brake signs are not up.
So that's because of the state of Michigan?
Is Euclid 13?
Pardon me?
Is Euclid down there M-13?
Yeah. Right, right up to the intersection.
It's Alzberg.
Yeah, right there, Alzberg.
So I don't think it's come down at all.
Yeah, I didn't know, I don't think it's down to the intersection.
Okay, before you make your motion, I'm glad you're here, I think that this is great. Is there anybody else that has anything that they wanna talk to David about?
I'll make a motion to approve, may I face it?
Okay, we got a motion to approve, obviously nobody wants to talk to you.
Go ahead, the high bureau.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Hang on a minute. You got a motion to pick the communications, you gotta vote on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And now we have another motion?
What was that again?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Every, anybody in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any opposed? What if I was opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.
I don't know.